I turned on. Did I turn?
And you need batteries. That's why I put them on to charge, but they may not be charged. Here's the nails.
Yeah, I think so.
Is Doreen working?
This should work. Is this any better? Sounds good? Yes, it is. You're shaking your head, yes.
It might, but nobody's home. Giovanni, you still haven't come to her?
Okay. Technology at its best. All right, I call to order the meeting of the mayor and alderman, March 27th, 2023, and a regularly scheduled meeting. So we will start with... We'll start with the prayer. And Mr. Tittle is not here.
Open the sergeant, did you just start a prayer?
Sure. Shall we pray? My father, again, we thank you for this evening to commence with the business of the city. We just thank you again for the opportunity. Thank you for our community and the involvement we have with each other throughout the process of working together in the community. We just ask your blessing on this meeting. We ask for the loved ones in Nashville that are experiencing sadness through the evening, and our friends down in Mississippi who are suffering from the storm damage and the loss of life over the weekend. We just commit these dear ones in our surrounding areas to thee and ask your blessing now in our meeting tonight in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you. Could the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts will come forward? They're joining us again this month to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So anytime you're ready, can start us.
Do the uniform salute. If you are not in uniform, place your hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order on.
Would you introduce the troops that are here?
Actually, you know the Cub Scout way more than I do.
Yeah, so we actually have a scout from troop 12, but this is Reese, um, Westerville. We got Garrison Andy from troop 12 with a roll arm. We've got Colin and Lucas and Luke and Virginia and Thomas, and then we got Will in troop 12.
Okay, continuing with the agenda, may we have the roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Therefore, we have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted from the February 27th city council meeting. There was no... There was a public hearing. We can take a motion to approve that minute first. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to per...
Is there a second to the motion? Any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved for the public hearing. Next, the minutes for the city council meeting of February 27th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion or additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. Is Mr. Adam Hughes here? Mr. Hughes, putting him on the agenda as part of the citizens' comments. Please approach the podium to discuss something briefly that the council will be reviewing and working on, hopefully, in the immediate future. But if you would just give us an outlay of the subject.
Yes, thank you so much to Mayor Malouf, to everyone on the council, to Lucy Keeble for helping set me up, and everyone in Montegoal who's been interested in this topic. My name's Adam Hughes. I work with statewide organizing for community empowerment, or SOCOM, and I'm here to talk about something called the Jackson Law that our members across the state and locally have been interested in for a while. I'm here to do the very rare thing of talking about something that will give you all more control over the future of the town of Montegoal without costing anyone a dime. The Jackson Law is a law that was passed, I think, in the late 80s that gives municipalities the right to approve or reject proposed landfills or landfills expansion that would happen in the town of Montegoal or an area surrounding one mile outside the boundary of Montegoal. So it actually gives a little extra territorial authority. If the only catch is that it has to be affirmatively adopted before a landfill comes up, which is why it's good to think about it at a time when nothing... There's no kind of controversy or no potential landfill that would get in the way. By a two-thirds majority, the governing body, the town council, would have to accept the Jackson Law. And once they do that, any proposed landfill would go through a public notice process, and the town council would be able to affirmatively decide whether to accept or reject the landfill if it's not in the interest of the town. It's not saying that there can be no landfills. It's saying that you all get to make the decision if this is something that makes sense in the town. I have these packets, which I can pass out, that have our one-page information about the Jackson Law. The second page shows the list of municipalities that have already chosen to adopt the Jackson Law. This is plenty of counties, cities, towns throughout Tennessee, from the 90s to, I think the latest was just last year, Murray County, Tennessee adopted it. And then there's a draft resolution from the county technical assistance services that you can adopt. You'd have to change some of the language to make it so it's not about the county and about the town, but it is just exactly what you need to pass and then report to TDEC, and they would add you to the list of towns that have passed this. And then if, in the future, a landfill would come up, you would be notified and you would be able to go through that process. So it's really something that has no downside for you, just something that needs to affirmatively be put in place. I know our members in places like Crab Orchard and Duff in Campbell County, Tennessee, have gone through this already, and it's helped when proposed coal ash landfills have been proposed there. Community members who lived right nearby were able to say, you know, "We have well water. We don't think this is something that's going to be good for our community." So I can pass these out. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments or thoughts on what this would mean or why this would be important here, but yeah, thank you for giving me the time.
Well, thank you for joining us this evening, and yes, if we can have that for our council members, that would be fine. Council members, are there any questions that you have about him at this time?
No.
We're not voting on this matter.
No, we're not voting. This was an introduction of something that I feel we should at least consider and see how it would help the town. As you all probably know, in recent events, Grundy County had the authority and so far has been successful in preventing a quarry outside city limits within Grundy County, but still something that was dealt with and it may or... May not be in... Is it in the courts, Lucy? The Grundy County?
I thought it was.
I think it's in the courts, yeah.
It's still in the courts. Thank you.
Did Grundy County use the Jackson Law? They had a different law.
No, they used the County Powers Act.
Yeah, okay. Have they since adopted this?
So that's a question, Adam. The County Powers Act, which we, which Montegoal doesn't have, but there are counties like Grundy County that has the County Powers Act. I think Marion County just adopted it, if I'm not mistaken. Does anybody know about that?
I don't know, and I don't want to get into all of that, but if it's Grundy County or Marion County or even Franklin County, we'll work on that and see where this takes us. But I appreciate that.
I'd recommend going to the county commissions and suggesting and raising this to them as well, but you can also act without them acting.
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Let's continue. Any citizens' comments at this point? I will say, based on the several past meetings, we'll have discussion from citizens if there is a question on what we are discussing. When we discuss a motion, it's discussion on that motion only. So we want to limit some conversation that may or may not be important, but when we discuss a motion, the discussion is on that motion only. So I just wanted that clear. Okay, mayor's communications. I will contribute from time to time as the subjects come up. Right now, I have no statement other than Montegoal was visited by a group from Tennessee Tech about an electric vehicle program. They didn't want any discussion. They said they had put it out at various publications. They didn't want any decision. They just wanted it known that they are developing a program, and in time, they will send me information. When I get that information, of course, I'll pass that on. Their thrust seemed to be, from a very brief conversation, businesses. We don't have that much city property that we could offer. The two or three charging stations here behind the library is all that we have right now on a city level. As you know, Tesla is going into the parking lot of Piggly Wiggly, and we'll see if that whole electric vehicle program moves forward. But Tennessee Tech did make contact, and we'll see how that goes. They're supposed to send me more literature, which will be far more informative than my few comments just now. So having said that, calendar of events. April 1st, of course, is the Easter egg hunt, 1 o'clock behind this building in Hannah Pickett Park. And the next meeting would be... What did we say the next? April 24th and May, so it does not conflict with Memorial Day, will be that Tuesday, May 30th. So just wanted to pass that on. Let's continue, then. Police Department? Your report, please.
Hi, Councilman. Councilman, Councilwoman, how you guys doing today? Well, just want to go out and say that I've had a lot of visitors at the police department over the last month and a lot of, I'm not going to say concerns, most of it has been, "Could we up our patrol? Could we up our patrol?" I felt that we've done that. I've had several, several individuals come up to me and say that they see our patrol units there and they haven't seen them in a while, which is pretty fantastic. So that goes to my patrol units, my guys. They're out patrolling day in, day out. So I just wanted to say to the citizens, "We did listen, okay?" I just got a few things to go over, public announcements. Had a few citizens that have been scammed, okay? I'm just going to go over that right now. So one of the scams was, say, "It's an IRS scam, okay?" So they're receiving phone calls saying, "Hey, you owe the IRS X amount of thousands of dollars. Now you need to pay us this much money, and you have to go get a prepaid card." I just want to let everyone know that this is a scam. The IRS will never contact you by phone. It's always by mail or it's at your phone bill. So that's the only two ways it's going to contact you. The other scam that we've been having is publisher clearinghouse. Believe it or not, a young lady, she came up to me and, you know, she's scammed out about $6,000 to get a million dollars. So I just want to let the public know, and you can let your families and friends know that if you have to pay money to get money, it's a scam. So, and it's definitely out there, and this is not just here, but it's in multiple counties. So just be aware, and it's mostly that a lot of our elderly citizens are being taken advantage of. So I implore anyone that if they do receive a letter like that or a phone call, to come and see us personally or give that said person our phone number, and I'll call them because it's most likely a scam, okay?
So chief, if that happens, do they do a police report through you?
They will do. They can do a police report. It's going to be a miscellaneous report. Unfortunately, because most of this is international crime, so we can turn to TBI, but unfortunately, TBI has been dealing with this for so long that it's not going anywhere. So I can do it if the bank needs it to replenish their money. They can get a report from us, and we can do that. But other than that, it's not, as far as the investigation goes, most of this, like I said, it's overseas, so out of my jurisdiction. But we will report to replace any monies that were taken out of someone's bank account if their bank needs it, okay?
Great, thanks.
Let's see here. Most of you, if not everyone, has definitely seen a lot of police activity here in the last few weeks, probably the last two weeks, a lot of blue lights. The reason that we're out, traffic control enforcement, is because we've had two different citizens on two different occasions almost get hit by speeders on bicycles down Main Street, okay? So we have beefed up that patrol, and unfortunately, you know, some people did get tickets, okay? But I don't feel bad because we're here protecting citizens of Montegoal and the visitors, okay? So I'll just say, "Slow down. You won't get a ticket."
Well, chief, if I can interrupt right here. As some of you may know, I've been on the mountain 30 years, and the complaint has been, "Oh, the police don't do anything," or "When they do, they were speeding," or "They weren't speeding," and rolling through stop signs and all that. Nothing against previous police departments, it's just there had always been an increase in demand for some kind of police activity to slow down speeders. So I think your efforts are noteworthy, and if people are speeding, then I guess they need a ticket. Now, there's been... The officer has discretion, I understand all of that, but our effort is not to punish, it's just to slow down in the name of safety.
Correct.
So I want to make that point.
And we write more warning tickets than we ever do traffic tickets because really it's to educate, but unfortunately, when you're, you know, speeding successfully, you know, we can't overlook that, I'm sorry. Anything else?
Are you finished?
I'm finished with that.
Okay, do you want to discuss weapons for a minute, and then I'll chime in?
Want to bring up to the council the purchase and swapping of our current duty weapons, and I briefed that, of course, but in small summary, .357 is a costly round to practice with. Obviously, it's a much bigger round than a 9mm. So the 9mm, it's going to be, my guys are going to be able to practice more often, which means hopefully it'll never happen if they get put in that critical incident situation. They're going to be more accurate, so, you know, we want to make sure that we're a count forever round, okay? And it's a lot less costly. The city will save money.
Okay, let me elaborate a little bit. We're talking about ammunition. The officers have to qualify on a regular basis with their weapons. .357 Magnum round, it's a bullet, is more expensive than the 9mm bullet, and it's, as much as I'm concerned about the budget, it's also seems to be a safer, more practical weapon and ammunition program for our city as opposed to Los Angeles or Chicago or one of the
Correct.
larger cities. So this has basically little effect on our budget, and I turn to Debbie to discuss that for a minute, but with the swap of that and the reduced cost of ammunition, it seems to be a very worthwhile endeavor that we should approve tonight. What is some of the basics?
They have money and machinery and equipment to cover that, and we're not going to exceed $2,500.
So is that the delta after we sell the current service weapons?
Correct, that's going to be the swap amount.
Therefore, I'll entertain a motion to approve the swap of weapons to accommodate a 9mm round and not... The cost not to exceed $2,500.
So moved.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
How many guns were you talking?
It's eight.
Eight guns?
Yes, ma'am, eight.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say, oh, should it be roll call? Roll call because it's a budget item?
Yes. I don't know the difference between one gun and another.
Diane?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I believe that's all I had to go. Oh, okay. On advice of council, well, let me start at the beginning. We have the ability to start a K-9 officer patrol. The officer's pay is already slotted into the budget. It was a slot that wasn't filled, so the money is there and the slot's available. Because it's a lease agreement, we need approval to take care of the dog. And taking care of the dog monies will come out of the drug fund, and we already have a balance in the drug fund with more to come, so we don't see that as a financial issue. The drug fund is administered only by the police chief and the city recorder, or chief financial officer, as I refer to Debbie. The mayor and council have no say on the drug fund. It's handled with the state and the chief of police and our city recorder. So you've all had copies of it. There's nothing that our attorney saw that would be a problem, so we're just asking for an adoption, for a motion to adopt that lease agreement that I had forwarded to you. So is there a motion on that?
Can we discuss it?
Yes, we would discuss the motion. We just need a motion.
No, I meant, can we discuss the K-9?
Yes, but first I need a motion to discuss the agreement, which is the K-9.
You need a motion to discuss the agreement? Then I make a motion.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes. Yes, there is. Okay, what is this going to cost the city? Is this coming out? Everything is coming out of the police department, right?
No, the dog, the K-9, is taken care of by the drug fund, which is separate from the city budget.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. It's going to be taken... It's going to be taken care of by the police department, by the drug fund?
Yes.
Okay, what if this dog bites somebody? Who's liable for it?
Well, the dog is under the handler's control all the time because he's a drug-smelling search-for-a-missing-person dog, not an attack dog, as we've seen sometimes. This is a dog that's been to nursing homes and schools and just about every public place they were invited to, as I understand it. So there's none of that. Basically, when a drug dog does his work or her work, the area is cleared, they smell the vehicle and around, and that's it, strictly under the control of the handler and then back into the vehicle.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not talking negative about this, but I'm just asking, what if this dog bites somebody? Who's liable for it? Is the city liable for it?
It would be the town.
It would be the town.
The town of Montegoal.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the motion?
So according to this contract, we're going to give the handler, which is Deputy Brant Boss, an additional three and a half hours of compensation a week?
So that... So the dog does train on Wednesday, three and a half hours, and that comes out of the drug fund itself.
Okay, so that's what was my question. That additional three and a half hours for training also comes out of the drug fund?
Correct, so that's going to come out of the drug fund. This particular dog and this handler has already proven that it's been able to... And drug fund, drug money is great, and I'd love to have it up to $1 million, but more importantly, what this dynamic duo does is he gets the drugs off the street so it's not affecting our children and affecting our families. So most of this drugs, it's, this dog does not pick up on marijuana. It's not been trained for marijuana. It's been trained for fentanyl, for heroin, for crystal meth. This dog, so far, in conjunction with this department, it was working under the department that was helping us, has gotten over a pound in the last six months of drugs, and that's going to be heroin, fentanyl. I mean, it's, these are drugs that are significant. And as far as the biting, anything can happen. It really can, but the way this handler works is the dog walks around the car, the individuals are inside the car. So the dog, if the dog alerts, he puts the dog back in, and then this individual, this K-9 officer, then quotes TCA laws, case laws, as to why we can now search a vehicle.
Right, if that dog hits on that vehicle, then you have a right to search.
Correct, and then we put the dog up. So the dog's also, it's a very docile dog. This dog is used for tracking as well, for children and for elderly. So this, this particular breed of a dog, its temperament is very docile. It's not an attack dog. It's not bred for that. It's bred for, you know, being around children. So to answer your question, can the dog, can any dog bite? Yes. If it does bite, it would fall back on the city, but I will tell you that, I mean, I really don't think that's going to happen. I mean, honest, in my honest opinion, I would not bring or ask the council to bring an animal to our apartment that I think was a danger.
Well, and I will say, my conversations with the chief cover those points exactly. Obviously, we don't want any liability in the town any more than we may already have, but I just don't see this as a threat because of the training and the handler and their reputation and previous accomplishments. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I have a question that, if it doesn't sound too crass, but I'm curious to know whether you think this dog is going to pay its way? And by that, I mean, the drug fund is, the monies come from confiscated properties that were seized in, as part of a drug arrest, and I think the money that's in there was Correct. something that our prior chief had confiscated. Obviously, if we're, if we're spending three and a half hours extra a week and we're covering all its vet bills, it's going to draw down that fund.
It does.
And, and that fund can be spent on, everybody knows, or in case everyone doesn't know, that money has to be spent on drug-related equipment and manpower, but it could be spent on the car.
It could be, yes.
If we put drug fund on the side of it, you know, something like that. So I guess my question is, given, given our limited funds, is this something where we think we're going to be able to keep that drug fund populated with, with currency in such a way that we can keep this going? Or are we going to run it down and then that's going to be the end of the program?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because before I even entertained the idea, I called the previous employer of this, and they basically told me the first six months that this dog was operable, they put in over $80,000 in the drug fund. Now, will that happen here? Most likely it will happen. How fast is it going to happen? I don't know. The benefit that we have, if you want to call it a benefit, we're a tourist town. We have the interstate, which means most likely that's going to happen quicker than where this dog previously came from. So I wholeheartedly believe that we will be able to sustain and the, not only the K-9, but we will also be able to get patrol units as well, so out of this. I do believe we're going to be able to put that much money in the drug fund. Because you got to realize, it's not only currency that we're receiving, it's also vehicles. When you seize a, when you seize a vehicle, if it's paid for, and after it's been through probate, then it, you know, it's going to be granted to us, and we can try and sell it, put that money into the drug fund. put that money into the drug fund as well.
Okay, and how long is this contract for?
It can be null and void at any time.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's not a, there's not a set time. In, in there, it states that the chief or the officer can, you know, null and void at any time.
Okay.
So if we do see, let's just say, hotbed grenade, 'cause you brought up a good question, let's say in three years, 'cause right now, we have enough money in there, 'cause I've already done the math, if I didn't put anything else in there, I could pay for that dog for three years. Unless we're not putting anything in there, that's honestly not gonna happen. But let's say at the end of three years, if the city said, "Well, we really don't want it," then we don't have to keep it all. So.
Yeah, it's, it says one year automatically renewable up to 10 unless terminated, 14 days by written party. So, yeah. Well, I appreciate, it sounds like you've done your homework on it.
I tried.
It's good.
Yes, sir.
I came in here with a bias, 'cause I had a dog sniff my car when I was 20. It tore apart.
We were all, well, see, and that's the thing, too, and I've seen it, you know, I've seen animals that were aggressive, but those animals were trained that way.
Well, the dog didn't tear my car apart. The officers did, after the dog sniffed it.
Oh, well, then there
And there was nothing in the car. I just felt, I felt personally maligned.
Thank you. If we could keep the meeting moving, I'd really appreciate it. We'll have war stories after this meeting. Okay, so any further discussion?
I make a motion, we approve the contract.
Didn't we have?
Even after my bad experience.
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, well, I
So we had discussion on the motion. Now we're ready to vote?
I think it was, was it seconded?
It was seconded.
Yeah, seconded.
So now we're ready for a roll call vote, please?
Doran?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Diane? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Anything else, chief?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you very much. Nice job.
Thank you, guys.
Next is the fire department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to talk to you about using the fireman's phone so we can get a dalmatian.
I think we should look into that. I love dalmatians. Go ahead.
We ran 33 calls for, to date, for March. Kinda got hairy this weekend when storms had moved through. Didn't actually break those calls down, but they're, they're there. The guys were tirelessly helping pedal them. They, they had a tornado or some kind of event go through, pedal them, and kinda messed up the whole area. So they were out from about midnight Friday night till probably 6 o'clock Saturday morning, so it was, it was a long night. OSHA done a inspection for the town on the 23rd. The fire department was one of the two buildings that was inspected. There were three items that needed correction. The cascade system that I brought to your attention last meeting, he actually wrote it up for the bottles with a hydro test, so that was kind of a reality check there, that it was, you know, that, that kinda mocked everything that I'd stated and said before. The bottles were manufactured of three, of 20, or 2006, and they should've had a hydro testing done about every five years. The bottles were, that's the manufacturing date on the bottles, so the bottles had never been hydro tested since we've done the, this is, that was kind of a big deal. There was an issue with the blood-borne pathogens and a hazardous communications training, which is MSDS and SBS stuff, and blood-borne pathogens. There was no need for that for the fire department until I was hired, because that was not a full-time department. He said, you know, volunteer departments would not held that standard. So he got us on that, but he did give us the training and all that stuff. So that's kinda corrected. I mean, we got roped for it, but it's corrected now. We can now keep the training for the next year. It's an annual training we'll have to do. We've been invited to Swanee throughout the summer and the fall for state classes that's been going on, or that's scheduled to go on. One starts actually tomorrow night, and the classes is taught by Tennessee Fire and Co.'s Academy. They're certifiable courses, so we've got some guys that's gonna go in and go through all that stuff. Swanee offered to kinda pick up, where Montegoal's been hosting for a year, Swanee's gonna pick up some classes, so. As of Wednesday, we're gonna, we've got lieutenant's position, where AJ promoted to captain. We've got lieutenant's position open, so we're gonna start the application process of it for the 29th, if we can find a lieutenant. Kinda delegate some, some job details and job duties over onto another officer to better, you know, help our command structure within the department. I'm kinda looking forward to that. That should, should free up some time on some of us, but that's kinda all that's been going on, fire department-wise. I think there was about 15,000, 20,000 gallons of water used over the month. Co's enforcement, if AJ will step up here, I'll be happy to read for him, but that way the public can address Co's if you have anything. On Co's enforcement, he's issued nine violations to date for the month of March. Co's has been working follow-ups from five items off of last month's agenda. There's been five Co's cases resolved this month and closed with the resolution. Any citizen that may have a complaint, if you can't reach one of us, you can still stop by City Hall and follow out, or fill out the, the manual paperwork. That way, we've got proper documentation and stuff for AJ to chase the complaint and make sure that we, we have a paper trail for everything. On the building inspection side, it's kinda short and sweet. There's, in March, I've done eight building construction-related inspections. All of them was for residential sites. There's two new commercial site plans that's been submitted and under review from the Planning Commission. Two commercial entities has pulled building permits and construction's underway at one of those. That's what I have for you.
Any questions from the council?
If, if a citizen has an issue with something, and they're not sure it's a violation, will that be explained? They can just
Yeah, still turn it in, you know, that'll give us the contact information, so we can at least make contact with them and go over everything and kinda touch in on what their, what their concerns are. So, y'all have any questions? Will?
Any progress on the one that was issued last, last March?
Yes, for the shrubs and the, on the, on the property.
The fencing and the junk car.
AJ actually went through that. The fence was, was put back up and repaired, and we followed it.
Was it backwards?
Well, and like I said before, it depends on what we call backwards, and if that's the case, I've got several I'm gonna write in Montegoal. So the, the backwards fence, though, has been put up since. The shrubs, I, I think there's actually more shrubs over there that's died since the complaint was issued. That's been brought to the property owner's attention. He's aware of it. He, he still ensures there'll be corrective action. The corrective actions that we told him now is ASAP. So the corrective action, the mayor's ASAP, is I'll be there in four days.
All right, 'cause just, just so everyone knows, it was 2015, same complaints.
Yes.
2017, same complaints.
That's right.
Never resolved, never resolved. 2022, same complaints, still not resolved.
That's right.
It was supposed to be resolved in November of last year, still not resolved.
That's right.
Okay, just want everyone to know.
Well, as you know, and in all fairness to everyone, we have an administration now and a new building inspector now, and there've been changes made since November 28th. So I think, quite frankly, both these gentlemen would be, to be commended for their follow-up and treating everyone the same. If it's one fence, then it's all the fences in town, et cetera, et cetera, so.
And, and one concern that I've got, after talking with the property owner, and I've also talked to, to the general manager, I've been, I'm not stating any names in public right now, but I've talked to the general manager. The general manager still ensures that there'll be a 12-foot concrete retaining wall put up. Okay, so, so all of this stuff's temporary down that back stretch of that road, and I understand that what's there is existing now, they need to be held up to the maintenance standards. I agree 150%. He agrees with me. So, you know, it's the facts now of ensuing and pursuing the, is there a fine that's gonna entail? Is there a trip to city court that's gonna entail? He knows that. He's aware of that as of Thursday, the man was told that.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Parks and Recreation, you know about the Easter egg hunt at April 1st at Hannah Pickett Park? Somebody, Doreen, has decorated Harton Park. Do you know who that is?
That's amazing, isn't it?
It's amazing how things happen, so thank you, Doreen.
That Easter bunny must've done that.
Yeah. Oh, the Easter bunny's in town, that's right, I forgot.
That's right.
Thank you very much, Doreen, for you.
You're welcome.
And those that helped, hopefully they were volunteers, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
The park needs attention. Even though the park is not ours, for those that don't know this, it's owned by the Harton Family Partners. It's been given to the town to use. They've sectioned off a park, and that's where the eagle and the gazebo are, and they've never said no to anything we've asked them for. So we've decorated the park that isn't ours with their blessing, and again, thank you, Doreen, for that.
You're welcome.
Utility manager. He is not here tonight, but I have something in his stead that has been hanging around, according to one estimate. What?
Utility manager.
Oh, I know, that's later with Travis. I just wanna get the shop out of the way.
Oh. You said utility.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant street department, or whatever Keith buttner heads. Thank you very much. Okay. There are three proposals here to do work that has been in the hopper, I guess, for a period of time. The estimate ranges from 2,800 to 5,000. It's all the same work. What Keith had requested is increased electric service, so that he can charge the batteries for all of his power tools. Right now, what is existing is 100-amp service that does two batteries at a time. The other thing that he's requested is another outlet or two on either side of the building where the vehicles are parked. So it's all of that, and it's increasing the service from 100-amp to 200-amp, et cetera. It's the upgrade that was outlined. So the estimate submitted by Heavenward Bound, Howell King, is $2,800. He's met with the folks over there, and this bid is based on what they've asked for, which I have just repeated. So I will entertain a motion to accept that proposal of $2,800 to do the work at the shop. So the other, what, the other two? One was for $3,018, and one was for an even $5,000. So, any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve this work. It is within the budget.
I'm going to make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Just out of curiosity, which, is it coming out of the buildings and maintenance budget, or which, which budget line item? The streets, the general streets budget?
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please?
Doran?
Yes.
Justin? Yes.
Diane? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Well, going back to, I skipped over D. I'm very sorry. I apologize to Travis and John. It's now the utility manager's report. Travis, do you wanna start?
Sure.
For those that don't know, Travis Wilson is our engineer for water and sewer and has done a lot of work, which has given me a lot of work, but that's part of it, so thank you for that.
Just some updates on projects. We received a report from the concrete expert who visited the water treatment plant. They indicated that there were some issues that they observed and that further testing needed to be done. They need to do core samples on the concrete to make sure that the concrete still had structural integrity and was not, had any kind of integrity with the structural compression strength of the concrete before any adhesion or any covering was put on the surface. So that was their recommendation to ensure that whatever was put on there doesn't peel off like the previous repair was. They said that that was a sign of, there were some issues with the concrete mix, possibly, and they wanted to, to verify that through the core samples. And they'd be able to test the aggregate, the strength of the mix, the air entrainment, and through that, they would be able to see if it was just patchwork that was not done properly, or if there's actual, some degradation of the mix going on that's going to prevent any type of material to adhere to the structure itself.
And these drillings or core drillings will help answer those questions and address those issues?
That's correct. They, they recommend to drill a four-inch diameter hole in the top surface of the, in container, so that we don't have to drain that and take the treatment plant out of operation. We're going to do that from the top. They'll go down approximately six inches into that to get a sampling of the, of the concrete, make sure that some of those places it's below grade, so that they can see if that matters below the, the level of the water, below the grade of the ground. And then they'll, they'll take those and have those tested, and so they're estimating up to eight cores. When they pull those samples out, they'll replace that with some high-strength grout, which will be stronger than what they're pulling out. They're not going to penetrate into the actual basin. It's a vertical in the wall. I think the walls are about 18-inch thick, so there's no issue with that being penetrating the, the surface, so.
Travis gave me this evening the proposal letter for contract to do this work at a cost now of $33,000. Do you want to address the basics of this agreement?
Yep. They are, and this is the, the sampling group, Terricon, $3,500 a sample, up to eight. That's for them to come drill and core, send those off to repair the core drilling places with the grout, and then prepare a report afterwards. So, so it's, it's likely, I think we could get by with six, but they say up to eight, but I think three on each side, so it's, it could possibly be $7,000 less than that.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the proposal as submitted and explained by Travis Wilson.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
Can we discuss it?
Yes, we discuss the motion after it's seconded. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I think $33,000 is a lot of money. I think we could buy a lot of Flex Seal with $33,000.
That's always an option.
Uh, any, anything cheaper? I mean, what do we do? That's a lot of money for just a sample.
I think someone had that idea back when it was patched previously, and
As a Flex Seal?
Of something, and so, so, yeah, the, the problem is, is that without understanding what's causing the material to flake off, probably the fix to that is gonna be in the neighborhood. If we can line that, I'm just throwing some numbers out that, don't quote me, but $50,000 to $60,000 to just coat or line that. So you wouldn't want to pay $60,000 or $70,000 to line it just to find out that that's not going to adhere and that, that would peel off because of some degradation or chemical processes going on inside the concrete.
So if it, if it's gonna cost us $33,000 to get samples, and it's gonna cost $50,000, $60,000 to fix it on top of that, right?
That's correct.
That's assuming the sample comes back good.
Yes.
Correct.
What happens if the sample doesn't come back good?
If the sample comes back, that there is structural issues with the concrete, then that's probably not very good news, that that structure will have to be demoed and replaced, and where that's at is not a very good place. It's a, and I, I can't even, I'm not even thinking in that direction right now, just because I, I don't feel like that's what it's going to say. I mean, there's certainly the risk that if the town chooses to just not do the testing and proceed with lining, with, you know, the risk of it not happening, but, and something happening to it in the future, then that's, that's, that's an option. That's not what I would recommend, just because that's still a lot of money.
Travis, just a touch of background information, you didn't come up with this 'cause you needed a project. You didn't come up with this because you needed a project. So where did this come from? Wasn't it TDEC?
And, yes, TDEC, it's a notice of violation from TDEC that the basins need to be repaired. Like, the original date was to be repaired in October of last year. Still not repaired, obviously, and so they've given us to the end of the summer to come up with a repair. So it's because of TDEC and their inspections out there that they say that it is in disrepair and that, that we need to do something about it. And what this is, just to further explain, is when, when water is pumped from Laurel Lake, up from the lake to the treatment plant, it pumps it into, I'm going to say, it looks like a big swimming pool, concrete, and then from there, it goes into the plant to be treated. And so if that basin fails, or it's not functional, then you can't get water into the plant without creating a new basin. And so it's a critical part of the water treatment process, and so TDEC is, is saying you can't afford to wait until it completely fails, because then the town is out of water, and then you're at emergency situation of where you have to do something to get the water into the plant, and that takes time, and so there's a danger if, if there's a failure there, which there's not, but there could be if it left, went, left unaddressed for a period of time.
But it was my understan, excuse me, it was my understanding that TDEC, you got an extension to this TDEC notice?
That's correct.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So there's no demo and just fixing a new one?
We don't want to do that. That's going to be very, very expensive.
Really? It'd be more than $80,000?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It would be, I'm going to throw out there, it'd be probably $700,000 or $800,000.
Okay.
Or more.
So to Doreen's point, then, if we test it, and it comes out bad, are we going to have to line it in the short term to get by until we can figure out a long-term solution?
Probably not.
We would just leave it?
Well, depending on what the tests say, and that's one thing that we don't know, is, is, is it failing inside and outside? Or how much time do we have? It's, it's like a medical diagnosis, is how much time do you have? Is, is the outside just peeling off, and the inside is good? And, you know, it could keep going like this for 50 more years before it completely fails, and then, so now you're back to, you have to do something because TDEC says so, and so...
Well, really, our hands are tied. TDEC said we have to do something.
That's correct. You have to do, you, you have to repair the, the concrete that's peeling off of the edges, because all of that is going into the, into the inside, and there's a report that has a lot of pictures in there that, that you can...
But this is the next step to solving the problem.
That is correct.
Because without this analysis, we don't know too much.
It's, like I said, it's, that's correct. It, it's an option. Another option is to not do the testing and try to line it, but then, you know, I, I would not recommend that, because, you know, you're putting a lot of money that, that could fail in a few years, and then you would still have to line, line it properly again.
So that's my question. Is the testing going to inform our lining? Is it going to give us, okay, all right.
It will tell you what kind of liners that maybe you cannot use, because it may not adhere properly.
Gotcha.
And then it may tell you what type of chemicals that, that you can use, and the adherence of those chemicals, or that, that process to the concrete, depending on what's going on inside. That some of the potential reaction that they think that's going on is, is it's a reaction from water from the inside and outside, depending on how it was formed and installed, which we don't really have that information. And so, was it waterproof? Is it getting water from the inside? Because water's always on the inside, and is it also getting water from the ground on the outside, or is that waterproof? And the entrainment that's in the concrete? The more you entrain air in the concrete, then the more it really waterproofs it, and so that's some of the information that will, the testing, the core sampling will tell us.
Okay. There were two questions out there. Ty, did you have something?
How old is this structure? Do we have any idea?
Um, John, do you know about the age of that?
50 years.
1966. We found the construction set the other day.
Okay. Lucy, you had a question?
Yeah, Travis, is there any, you're talking about taking a wide view of samples, six samples or so. Is there any wisdom to taking one sample, or is the substrate that you're sampling going to be so diverse that you have to take these multiple samples? Or could you start out with one and see what you find out before doing all the sampling?
Good question. So you, you have to take enough samples that covers all the, the areas of the containment. Some areas are above grade and outside of the water level on the inside. Some areas are below grade inside the dirt and below the water level. Some areas are below grade but above the water level, and so to determine if it's just, if it's all throughout, or if it's just on the top, is it structural, the structural integrity still beneath the soil that would sustain the structure because it's embedded in the ground? It's not all above ground, it's partially buried in the ground, and so...
Limiting those samples not give you a full report?
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Yes, I have two.
Yes.
So if we do these samples, how long's it going to take to get these samples back? Get the results back?
I would say probably, they haven't told us four to six weeks to, to actually come out, do the sampling, send those in, get those back, and get a report back from them. Terricon is doing the work, so...
So this is not going to take a couple of months to get this done?
No.
Okay. I know we can't afford not to do it, but can we afford to do it?
It's not a grant.
No.
It'll come out of the capital account of the water and sewer operation. It's not a grant. It's looked on as maintenance.
Okay. Did we have the money there to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Lee?
How competitive is this company, Terricon?
Terricon.
Do we know that's a normal charge, or is that somebody's brother-in-law doing it?
It, it's not. I mean, they're, it's a geotechnical company. There are a couple of firms. It's a professional service. I mean, we could, we could go...
And we don't know if that's competitive?
Um, I mean, I have not gotten core samples from a concrete sedimentation basin lately, so I, I would, I can gladly go and get from a couple of other geotechnical firms that might take a little time, because the problem is, they're going to want to come up and do a site visit, and so we'll have to pay them to do that as well, and so by the time we pay a couple of other folks to, to come look at some things, then it might be a little bit more money, but it's a risk, but I would be glad to shop it around to other geotechnical firms.
So we have no idea what, what the norm is for this course?
That's, that's in the range of the work. We, I mean, we do similar type projects, but like I said, I have not gotten core samples from a concrete structure such as this lately, but, I mean, it's, it's within the range of, of adequate price.
It sounds reasonable to you? Does it sound reasonable to you?
It sounds, I mean, I agree, it's, it's not cheap, but, I mean, it's, these days it's reasonable, I mean...
Okay. Ty?
We've used Terricon before, and I've, I've looked at other vendors. They were, they were the lowest, you know, the vendors that we looked at. I think it has something to do with proximity.
They're a larger company, and they get better pricing, it seems like, some of the other, they've got local offices in Chattanooga, and so some of the other companies are out of state. But, like I said, we'd be, we'd be glad to, to pursue that with other firms, but there may be additional fees that they might charge to come tell us something else, or to be on-site, or...
Okay. Lucy?
Just a quick, just a quick question. Are they on a TDEC approved list, like you said?
Uh, there's, there's no really TDEC approved list for that. It's just expertise.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Your discussion?
Last one, I promise. Are, are there other ways to, to get this same information? Non-invasive ways to, core drilling is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think other than just an observation with two sets of eyes and a guess is, is the other option.
We've done enough of that.
So, like I said, I mean, it's an option. I mean, I, I don't disagree at all. Things are, everything's very high, and equipment's very high, and services are very high. There's no doubt that that's, and I understand the cost ramifications.
Well, we've evidently known it's needed to be fixed, if it was supposed to have been fixed last October, so...
Well, that's my, one of two, well, two concerns, is the TDEC timetable, and their notice of violation, and you're talking about a water supply. It's not by a vehicle or trim a tree. I mean, this is all we have.
And I don't, I'm not trying to sound the alarm. I don't think there's any imminent failure there, but just to let you know the importance of that component in the treatment facility, that it, it is a major component. Water can't get into the plant without that basin, and so, although it's, it's not anywhere near imminent failure, but it, it does need to be addressed mainly because TDEC says so. And, and really, you don't want it to continue to degrade, because at some point, it will fail, and then at, at an emergency point, it's really going to be expensive, and it will affect, you'll probably be buying water for some period of time while that is addressed.
Thank you. Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. One other thing, while you're here, Travis, you gave us copies of the water tank contract, which was approved through the bidding process, et cetera, et cetera. Those are signed and in my office for when you're scheduled to meet.
Okay. Yep, we're still working on schedule, and that pre-construction meeting should be in the next couple of weeks, and that'll be ready.
And that's for the water tank behind the fire department, is the first tank we'll be doing. Do you have anything else?
Um, I don't, unless you have any questions specifically on any other items.
No, just that we're, well, we're working on a couple of things through grants. You know, we did the camera work. We're waiting for the report on that. You know that there are a couple of manholes that that report will be showing that will need attention, which we trust will be covered by the grant program, but we'll see how that develops. But other than that, I don't know of any right now, but I will say, this is a matter of procedure. By your vote, I'm going to sign the task order that Travis has given me for the $33,000. So just so you know, that's what I'm doing next. Do you have anything else?
Uh, just to follow up on your comment about the TV work. So we, we did find a lot of significant issues. I think John and his staff had, were real timely on addressing several of those emergency-type items, as they were found to prevent collapses in the road. I know they found a, a pretty significant water leak that was an indirect result of, of some of the camera work where water was going into the sewer line, and they were able to fix that. So, so I know that the town staff has really put a bunch of effort forth in making some of these repairs during the process, which saves a lot of money. They didn't pay someone else to do it, so, and they prevented, you know, a bad catastrophe from happening by addressing those, so...
That's all I was going to ask, was for a quick update on the I&amp;I story. Are we, is it unfolding like you thought it would? In, in other words, the culprits, the places where we thought were the problems, are those actually the problems? Are there new problems that we didn't know about?
Uh, I think there's a lot of problems that nobody knew about. The, one of the quotes from the, the TV company that did the inspection, they said that it was one of the worst systems that they've televised.
Huh.
Uh, so there's a lot of issues that will be addressed, which is a good thing that we've caught those before some catastrophe, you know, roads caving in or manholes overflowing, so, so it sounds like there's a lot of things. It was worth the money to do the inspection, because we know exactly what to fix, which is a good thing. You want to target your money. The monies that we'll use to repair these are ARP grant funds and ARC, so that's free grant money that will go toward fixing these. So we want to make that money count, and so I, I feel like we've done that, so...
Okay. Mr. Best?
I've asked a couple of months now, the planning permission meeting, and maybe Travis can answer it. You did a sewer and water capacity study.
That's correct.
And it was given back to the city. When you did that study, did you, we've got a lot of development that's being proposed right now. Did you figure that with any future development, or as we, or we are?
We did. We, we, we did some of both. We, we looked at what it currently is now, and then with some of the information that we were given on potential developments in various parts of the town, we loaded in, you know, conservatively, you know, a hotel here, and a hotel there, and, and houses here, and just to see what impacts that those had on the system. And so, so we did some of that as part of that project, and then the model is still there so that as things happen and evolve, because that, that's what's going to happen, that, that those new, that new information can be loaded in there to continually adjust, because as things are added, that takes up capacity, and so it's, it's kind of a, it's a living document or a living thing that you have to keep updating, so...
There's about five site plans in progress right now.
That's correct.
You know, and all of those together, so there's 85 homes?
Yep.
Possible hotel, restaurant?
Yep. We, we included all of those in the original assessment.
Thank you. Grant?
Yeah, just quickly to follow up there. So if I remember the, the study that was done, it was about 60% capacity left, but then if we have an inch of rain, it goes, goes to like 90% capacity, or even, even maybe 100% or, or over. So I guess in following up what he was just saying, you know, what, what is the city planning on doing until they fix the I&amp;I, about further, further development, further approvals of, of things? Do you have a time, timeframe set up for how you're going to phase in a lot of these developers that are on the table right now, until the I&amp;I stuff is, is, is fixed? What's, what's your recommendation to the city about, about development in general moving forward right now, like say, over the next 12 months before you get the I&amp;I fixed?
Uh, so dry weather and wet weather, two separate cups of soup to talk about. Dry weather, there's capacity. Wet weather, there is no capacity. And so that's not really different than most, probably every other sewer system in the state of Tennessee. When it rains, they're inundated with flows that are, you know, three, four, 10, 20 times dry weather flow. And so Montego is not different in that fact that they've got wet weather issues. So part of the TV work, we are identifying those issues to make repairs, and with this, the grant funding that we already have in place, as soon as that documentation is finalized, then we can be turned loose with proceeding with the rehab project. So within a year, you know, if, if the grant folks would, would hurry up and, and finish and finalize the documentation, you know, that, that project could be completed so that a lot of these I&amp;I issues can be addressed, so...
It just sounds like we, we may be getting ourselves in a situation where we're going to be over capacity before the I&amp;I, you know, gets, all that gets fixed. I just want to make sure that you've got, as, as the city engineer, some recommendations to the city about how to phase in the developments that, that's going on. Because I mean, we could, we could find ourselves, if it takes two years to do the I&amp;I, we could find ourselves over capacity really fast. And, and, and to say, you know, an inch of rain puts us at, at, you know, whatever capacity, overcapacity or something like that. I mean, good lord, how many times this month have we had an inch of rain that could, that could jump us over?
Well, just, just to give you some relevant numbers, you know, household is 150 to 200 gallons per day, per capita. So you could figure however many households might come to Montego. When it rains, you might get 400,000 gallons. And so a few developments of homes are really not what's impacting the town. It's the I&amp;I or the rainfall that, that gets into the sewer system that causes overload at the pump stations and the peaks. And so dry weather, again, is not, not really the issue, although it's something that, that we're certainly looking at, because we have that information loaded in the model. But the I&amp;I, which we're just right on the edge of the table fixing, is really what, what the important front burner issue is right now.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, they write books about this stuff, but you're our engineer, and we trust that you've done everything appropriately and timely. So thank you for that.
I, I was not done with my question when you, with the audience. Can I, can I finish, finish up?
Yes.
So the, the follow-up of that question was, we had, had heard, or we had hoped, I think as a town, that a lot of the I&amp;I was coming from the Assembly and being pumped to us from the town of Tracy City. It sounds like you're hearing that we've got some issues of our own. Are we also working with the Assembly and the town of Montego? Well, I guess the first question is, is it, was it really that way? And if it is that way, how are we communicating with those two entities to make sure that they're working on their I&amp;I at the same time?
Good question. So we just removed meters. Actually, we still have a gravity meter that probably was removed today. The logger at the Housing Authority was removed Friday. There's a logger at the Mount Gob England Road Station, and so we have, we'll be getting data from those probably next week, and then we'll be able to, to look and see what that impact is, because we've had a lot of storms over the last 30 days or so, and so we'll be able to see what, what flows we're getting from Tracy City, what flows we'll get from the, the Housing Authority, and what the net is that we're seeing at the gravity meter in town where those two force mints come in. So, so we'll have the answer to that question by the next board meeting, and see what impacts those are. But to answer the second part of your question, we are, we've been talking coordinate- But to answer the second part of your question, we are, we've been talking, coordinating with Tracy City. Uh, they put in the meter, the logger, uh, on the, on the flow meter that we went out and verified that it was working properly. We were in agreement with them, uh, the one at the Eamonn Station. So, um, so we've been coordinating, working with them. Uh, the same for the Assembly, we've been meeting with them. They also had their CCTV done of their entire system. Um, and so, they are too assessing the INI in their part of the Assembly. And so, I think both parties are, are coordinating with the town and, which is a very positive thing. And so, once all the data comes in, which should be in the next 60 days, we should have a lot of those answers that will tell us, you know, the impact of where a lot of this water is coming from.
Okay, we set up those meters at the Assembly as well, right?
Uh, the Assembly, we don't have meters on right now. We metered them, uh, we had a meter at the plant because they have two or three or four individual line segments that are coming into the main interceptor that, that goes through the Assembly. So, it's not that easy to just, you can't stick a meter at one spot and get all of their flow. Um, but we can, we did a net between the two meters and we know that it's either coming from them or us and we've done some flow isolation to determine, um, some of the impact that's there. And then, of course, the TV that we did inside their system will, will help tell us what we see, just like what we saw in the, in the CCTV inspection that we did here in the town sewer system, so.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Okay, thank you Travis.
Okay.
John, do you have anything?
No, just to add to the INI, we've been, we've fixed several smoke leaks. We've got reports on both flights and stuff. We found one of the gutters tied into the sewer. We got it dismantled, so we've fixed several of them so far.
That's good.
Great.
And I appreciate that, I'm sure the council does as well. Whatever we can do immediately, we should absolutely do.
That's what we're trying to do.
So, thank you for that. All right, um, let me, the building inspector we heard from, code enforcement we heard from, planning commission, I don't have anything to report. I think that there'll be more information after the April 4th meeting. There will be a workshop and then a meeting at 6 o'clock, April 4th. Um, before we get to, well, let's do Alderman report next. Doreen, anything?
Yes, I have, um, the Fresh Mess is going to be starting May the 15th. We'll do it every Monday, um, from here on till all the produce or whatever is gone. Um, with the exception of Memorial Day, we won't be there on Memorial Day, but it will be every Monday, starting May the 15th on Fresh Mess.
What time?
Be from 4 to 6.
Okay.
Um, feast on the street, the food trucks will be starting the first Thursday in May and it'll be once a month. And also, I'd like to mention the senior citizens. Uh, they have, they will be having a meeting tomorrow at 6 o'clock at the community center. Uh, they're trying to get groups together to plan activities and, um, looking for ideas, things that they can do for the senior citizens. And I would also like to talk about the Montego Cemetery. Uh, I got this email the other day, I'd like to read this. "Montego Cemetery is requesting bids in search of a professional individual or company to maintain the lawn. The request is to mow, weed, trim, blow grass, cuttings from headstones and pick up decorations that have fallen over for the rest of the upcoming season. Maintenance will begin the first business week of April. Bids must be written per mow bi-weekly. We will also request additional services for holidays, special occasions that can be discussed. Bids will be accepted via mail or email. The bid can be sent to P.O. Box 283, Montego, or MCA37356@gmail.com." So, that's Montego Cemetery Association. "The spring cleanup is going to be April the 1st and the 2nd. The Montego Cemetery Association is hosting a spring cleanup Saturday, April the 1st at 7:00 a.m. and Sunday, April the 2nd at 2:00 p.m. All are welcome and encouraged to come, lend a hand and help us clean up the memorial sites. Trucks for hauling garbage, tools and enthusiastic volunteers are much appreciated. We would like to request that families, that if families have old, faded or broken decorations on grave sites, they may be removed prior. Any remaining decorations with noticeable damage will be discarded respectively." They're asking all members of the Montego Cemetery Association to update their information on file yearly. And they, again, can send it to email, phone number or address to P.O. Box 283, Montego, or to MCA37356@gmail.com. And a lot of you may not know, but some of those records got burned up when Bill Bennett's house burnt. So, I think if you have, um, your deed to your plot, you might want to, um, let the Cemetery Association know what those plots are, where they're located. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much. That information will put on Facebook from the town as well as the website. That's important information, it's a cemetery here in town that deserves attention, so. Thank you for that, Doreen. Jessica, anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Dan?
No, sir.
Nate?
Um, I just want to let everybody know that, about the call that we had last Friday with the Architects Foundation. Um, we've, we're talking to them about helping us, helping facilitate a general plan for the town. Um, so, I have a, an application to go in, um, that I'm going to be trying to work on over the next couple of weeks, but, but stay tuned on that. It was a really productive call. Um, if you're interested to know more of what they do, you can drop me an email and I'll send you some links. But this is a foundation associated with the Institute of American Architects and they do this as a public service. So, um, if they come, they're going to want to learn about the community and it's, it's called a cost reimbursement fee schedule, so they don't charge us to come and facilitate, but they ask that all their expenses be covered. So, uh, we're going to be looking for churches and community groups that are interested in cooking a meal and having them out and talking to them so that they get as broad a, an understanding as they can of the community. So, there'll be more talk on that later. I just wanted to let people know that we're making some progress.
Thank you. I've asked Nate to spearhead this, uh, as a first step to talking about a general plan or some kind of plan for the growth of Montego. Uh, your emails and we'll put that on Facebook and the website as well. You can communicate directly with Nate with comments and questions and we'll get meetings organized and let you know when those are happening. So, thank you for that, Nate. The other thing that was in your packet and Dominic is here to answer any questions, there's a request to join that organization, you've reviewed it. Uh, is there any, well, to approve the $500 expenditure, is there a motion to approve based on the letter from Dominic?
Where is this at, we're looking at?
I don't remember a letter in the packet.
Yeah, it was.
Tennessee Tourism, I'm looking.
Dominic, if you have a minute, just come up and briefly touch on it. It's from Tennessee Tourism, an organization that Dominic is now affiliated with.
Uh, did you want me to give a summary or do you have any questions?
Either way, well, what's your organization and goes as far as Grundy County, I know?
So, I work for the South Central Tennessee Tourism Association now, which covers 13 counties, Franklin County all the way to Wayne County. So, Montego is in Franklin County, as you know. Um, so you're part of our territory and what we do is, we have a membership-based program for businesses, but then for towns and counties, we have, it's based on dues. So, each town and each county, it's based off of the population. So, for Montego being, I think it's under 1,500 or under 2,000, the dues would be 500. And the reason why we ask for dues is because we need an operational budget in order to function. Uh, we have a website that draws about 22,000 people onto the website and then we promote all of the counties, all of the towns and then all of the members. So, um, the real question that we have is, you know, a town can decide whether they want to be a free rider or a good neighbor with what we're doing. When we have our good neighbors who work with us, we like to work with them more. Um, so regardless whether or not you do pay your dues, we still want to promote and support businesses in the region, but with those dues, it will allow us to do more. Um, all the towns, they are represented in some way, but it does help us as an organization and we are also recognized by the State of Tennessee as the official tourism development region for South Central Tennessee.
Thank you. Any questions from the Alderman?
So, what is it you do beyond having a website that has 24,000 lovely visitors?
Okay, so, um, we have a welcome center, which is right outside of the Jack Daniel Distillery in Lynchburg. Um, based off of the traffic, we're expecting about 180,000 people to visit that building each year and we have brochures in there. We also have merchandise that people can purchase and it's Tennessee-based merchandise, so that's 180,000 people. Um, as of today, we signed a contract, or actually the Tennessee Whiskey Guild, they signed a contract to partner with us. So, the official trailhead of the Tennessee Whiskey Trail will be at the Lynchburg Welcome Center, so that will bring people in. We also partner with Nashville's Big Back Yard, which goes from Nashville down to the Shoals. So, it's a little bit out there, but we have, so we have different networks where we can advertise and get people and basically we're trying to, because the big hub of where we are is Lynchburg in terms of visitation, we're trying to get people who are going to Jack Daniel to be a little bit more intentional and to go to those smaller towns on their way back to Chattanooga or to Nashville.
Can you get Montego corn liquor added to the whiskey tour?
Um, if you become a member of the Whiskey Guild, there's, um, yeah. But, yeah, we definitely, we have a whiskey brochure, which, um, we promote, you know, basically everyone we, we find out has that, but then if you're a member as a, as a business, then you get extra visibility. We also have options for additional advertising, um, but it's just really a matter of, you know, trying to work with people on what they have and how we can support them.
I'm okay with this as long as we're paying $500 to get Montego promoted and not Jack Daniel's Distillery, you know, even though that's where you're based, is in Lynchburg. I'm all for $500 if Montego gets mentioned, you know what I mean?
Therefore, is there a motion to approve the $500 expenditure?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, any more discussion on the motion?
It's coming out of the tourism budget, I guess.
Yes. Roll call.
Doreen?
Yes.
Just.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks. Thank you Dominic.
We won't prove.
Yeah, you'll have proof.
80 proof.
Well, all right, if we can.
There you go.
Now, talk about, uh, old business, second reading of ordinance 03-23 concerning the sewer systems. This is the septic system and step system for, um, well, for the town. The first one being the development behind McDonald's.
This was the one that I didn't know what I was talking about in it, but Nate informed me that I would probably be one of the first ones that it would affect.
I don't think I said it quite like that.
Well, yeah, you probably did too.
Well, let's get to it, that's why I've asked Travis to stay on. Is there any question or discussion? Well, we've had a first reading. So, there's been a first reading, we're now at the second reading. Is there a motion to accept this ordinance 03-23 on the second reading?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All, well?
Travis, be kind to Doreen.
All those, all those, please, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, now for new business, we're going to have three first readings. The first one being concerning the additional dwelling units, uh, 04, ordinance 04-23 on the first reading. Is there a motion to accept that ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion concerning the first reading of ordinance 04-23, the ADUs?
No.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First reading of ordinance 05-23, site plans review. This is the 30-day review that the Southeast Tennessee Development had requested for additional time to review site plans and giving us additional time here to review them. So, is there a motion to accept on the first reading, ordinance 05-23, site plan review?
So moved.
Dan, it's moved, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, last of the first readings is on ordinance 06-23, the loading requirements. Where under certain circumstances, or this ordinance, you can load from the side or the rear, as I understand it. Is there a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance 06-23, loading requirements?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Is there discussion on the motion?
Sorry, community members, I can't see it over there, so I need to read, I want to read the bottom.
Is there any discussion on the motion, council?
I made the motion.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Doreen, second it.
Right, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have to approve Resolution 1-23, which deals with the CDBG grant, which was sent to us, um, by the grant folks at Southeast Tennessee Development. Uh, that's Resolution 1-23, I believe it's in your packet. It talks about the Montego Fire Department equipment. Now, with the resolution, we just pass it. So, is there a motion to accept Resolution 1-23, the CDBG grant?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and the next resolution is Resolution 2-23 concerning subdivisions, which is also in your packet. Is there a motion to accept Resolution 2-23, subdivision regulations?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That resolution passes.
Do we have any business proposals? Yes.
Oh, uh, is Mr. Camp here?
Does he have to be here?
Tom's not here.
So, we have to hold it?
Okay. We can't pass on that, the applicant has to be here. Um, okay, the last thing that we have to do, I will entertain a motion to move to executive session. It concerns, um, personnel or finance or legal proceedings. Those are the three basic issues for executive session. Is there a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We need to move to executive session, thank you all for coming.
Can I ask?
Chief, yes.
The sparkle date, you want to mention the dates?
The which?
Sparkle date.
Oh, I'm sorry, sparkle date is May 15th to the 19th.
You also probably need to mention the public hearing, um, April 24th?
We'll put that out.
Okay.
It's advertised.
Sparkle.
Chief, if you would make sure the building is empty except for you and we here.